Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Covington City Council meeting on any day of October.
Twenty second. In compliance with state law, city councils special and regular meetings are being held in a hybrid format with in-person, telephonic, and virtual options for public viewing and participation. Call this meeting to order. And Christopher, you'd like to please call the rolls.
I'm from number Soltis. I'm here.
I'm from number Porter.
Here.
I'm from number Hartsock.
Here.
I'm from number Hardhausen.
Present.
I'm from number Simone.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith.
Here.
Mayor Wagner.
Here.
Have a forum, Your Honor.
Thank you, Krista. If everybody could please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much. Next is approval of the agenda. Reagan, do we have any changes tonight?
No changes, Mayor.
Thank you. Look for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. Next up is reports of commissions. We'll start with Economic Development Council. Josh Lyons, welcome.
Thank you. It's been a while. Apologize for that. Although you have probably haven't been updated in a bit, we have been very busy with the Economic Development Council. Couple of general updates. First one is we continue to grow the the virtual downtown association presence. So reminder, that's us really trying to create a critical mass of business owners and property owners around kind of creating this idea of a vibrant downtown type of concept to give it, really to work towards a an identity that can hold its own against maybe what will end up being the newer shinier community, business community to the south, north, northeast. So we continue to work on that. We continue to grow that presence. We continue to communicate with one another through that forum, which is super cool. You know, in combination with that, we've got our, what we call our B two B program, which is our business to business program where, for example, we canceled the last meeting just to beat the streets and get out and talk to the different businesses. The goal of that really is to focus on the clean, safe welcome initiative that we started probably two and a half, three years ago now, where we're asking businesses to sign the C say do pledge, where they're they're basically committing to doing their part to keeping, keeping Covington clean and safe and welcome for our business patrons. So again, that's going well. One of the side things that we're working on is activating, and I'll explain what I mean by that, the karma statue project. So as you know, we're working on businesses being able to purchase statues of karma and then some sort of artistic program behind that. That's kind of, we're leaving that to the arts council, but our job is to really think about how can we activate this program in a way that it generates maybe business activity. There are a lot of communities that have done these kinds of projects and very successfully done so. The challenge has been, how do we do it in a different manner, something unique to Covington, not just the stereotypical, maybe scavenger hunt that might exist, you know, with some of these projects, but how do we really make it something cool and unique to Covington? So actually, we meet Thursday, and that's a big part of our agenda, is to kind of try and flesh out some ideas for that. So we'll be working on that. And then probably the bigger update, which will come, you know, after this Thursday's meeting, so it'll be the next update, will be, we're really honing in on what we think will be the bulk of our work moving into the next two or three years, which is really combining three ideas or things that we've been focusing on. The first one, forever since I've been on CEDIS, is the brand, the continuing the branding initiative, really backfilling and providing meaning about what it means for Covington to be growing towards greatness, which morphs into and moves into the downtown health viability project. And then the last thing that we've talked about before is what's Covington's X factor? What do people think about when they think about Covington and what uniquely defines us? And so that's really moving in towards this concept that has been kind of growing in the background around health and wellness and a unique partnership, that's the opportunity that's kind of popped up between Valley Medical Center and the city, involving some geographic synergies that exist that happened to be in the downtown core, that happened to draw upon some of the resources we have with all the medical services we have in Covington. And so all of a sudden, a healthy Covington turns into a concept like, can we really dream big? Can we do something like a blue zone? I'm sure a lot of you have heard about what blue zones are. They're uniquely, they're communities that are uniquely focused, first by accident and then later on purpose, around this idea of a healthy vital community. And so I think that's where we're going to start focusing our attention as we can, as we see an opportunity to do so. So that's that's about that's about it.
That's great. Does anybody have any questions for Josh? I'm excited.
Yeah. It's gonna be cool.
Yeah, yeah, it's very good. Thank you for being here, Josh.
Thanks, guys.
Have a great evening. Do we have anybody here to, for the youth council? Okay. Arts Commission, Riley, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. So for the Arts Commission, I know we recently had a joint meeting with you guys, so you're pretty informed on what our activities have been as of late. We, we are currently working on the statues that he was referencing, what was your name again? That Josh was referencing earlier and trying to figure out a way to have more structure around that program. So that's one of the big things in the work. So it's nice to hear another commission also having brains picked on how to make this happen. Other than that, we just recently attended the Makers Market. I think I saw some of you guys there. And we did a coloring contest, so we will be presenting the winners after our next meeting. Because as a group, we're going to decide the two winners for the coloring contest, but we basically, one of our very talented members made a couple variations of karma and then had children from the community color them in. And then we could use those coloring pages for social media or whatnot if we'd like to. So definitely we'll be presenting that after our next meeting. And then, other than that, for new business, we are planning a retreat. The Arts Commission, I think, is the only commission that does a retreat because it's an optional thing that you're allowed to do. Basically, it's a special meeting where we discuss new art ideas that we can, and projects that we can work on. So it just gives us a little bit more time to be creative because that's our group. So those are the updates I have. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Riley? Thank you very much. And that was a very good joint session we had. So thank you.
Awesome. I'm glad to hear they did well.
Have a great evening, Riley. Thanks for being here. Next is Equity Cultural and Social Justice Commission. Okay. Human Services Commission. Do we have anybody online from Human Services to give the report? Darius. Thank you for being here, Darius.
Of course. Thanks for everyone. I have a rather short report for Human Services for tonight. As bulk of our activity will be tomorrow night, that's when we'll be getting together for the commission's meeting and making and deliberating final funding recommendations for all the applicants we got this year. Other than that, in the past month, we looked at the remaining funding applications, kind of making a little bit of decisions there, and we visited two of the organizations who had applied for the funding as well, one being our own storehouse and the second was Vine Maple Place. And that's, we, that's pretty much it. Like I said, it's pretty short, but after tomorrow, I'm sure we'll have significant reports for everyone for the next meeting.
Perfect. Thank you very much, Darius, for giving a report tonight. Does anybody have any questions for Darius? Thank you again, Darius. You have a wonderful evening.
You as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation, Connie, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Connie Elliott with the Parks and Recreation Commission. And just a few things from our meeting this month. And first of all, we had a wonderful recreation and cultural arts update. So a lot of great successes with our programs this year. We had even more public engagement than last year, which is always hard to believe that we keep topping ourselves, but a few of the new events and really successful events that we had were the park pop-ups, where we had over a hundred participants. The tiaras and tea event that sold out our first year, so that was very exciting. And then the events that we had on the town center lawn, most recently the movie night. So it was great to see all the people in attendance there, all the cars parked there. That was very exciting. And that followed the back to school event that we had there, the movie. So I'm super excited to see those programs be a success in their first year. The second item, I'm sure you guys all saw the invitation today, is the ribbon cutting ceremony at Founder's Park. That's on Monday at four forty-five, which happens right after the ribbon cutting ceremony for the five sixteen improvements. So look forward to seeing you guys there on Monday. And then finally, we worked on our agenda for the joint meeting that we've got coming up with you guys in November. So very excited for that engagement and looking forward to having great conversations with you then and answering any questions and putting forward our ideas to you at that meeting. Are there any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Connie? Thank you very much for updating us. We really appreciate it. Have a wonderful.
You know, I have to put in something about karma, you know, because Josh and Riley talked about karma. Karma's at all of our events. That's what I thought you said.
Thank you, Connie. Planning Commissions, anybody here for Planning Commission or anybody online? Do not see anybody for Planning Commission? That concludes our reports of commissions tonight. We do not have any public communication. Next is our first of two public comment periods. Speakers will state their name, organization, and whether they are a Covington resident. Comments are directed to city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are to be related to city business. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to four minutes per speaker. For attendees participating by Zoom, click the raise hand button. For attendees participating by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. Once the city grants permission to speak, press unmute in Zoom or dial star six to unmute by phone. Notice campaigning for any ballot measure or candidate at City Hall or during council meetings, including public comment, is prohibited by state law RCW forty-two dot one seven A dot five five five. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to address council this evening? Is there anybody online wishing to address council? Please raise your hand. Seeing nobody approach the podium or raise their hand, this public comment period is closed. We will have a second opportunity towards the end of our meeting. Next is approval of the consent agenda consisting of items C one through C six. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda has been approved. Next up is a public hearing. Tonight, we have a public hearing to receive testimony from the public regarding the two thousand twenty-five revenue sources and possible increase in property tax revenues. This being the date set and proper notices having been posted and published in accordance with state and local law, the public hearing is hereby declared open. And Casey, you'll give the staff report? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Council. So tonight, we have a public hearing that's required under state law to consider possible increases in our property tax revenues and to review our other major sources of revenue within the city. Our deadline for setting the twenty twenty-five property tax levy for cities in King County is November thirtieth of this year, and I'll be bringing that back to you later in November. I've got a PowerPoint presentation here for you to go over our major revenue sources that we have within the city, and I kind of have it sorted by fund. Go ahead and get started on that. So our first one will be the general funds. And our first major revenue is our property taxes, and these two charts in front of you kind of show what our levy rate looks like versus the actual levy itself. And the way we always explain it is as the levy rate goes up, our levy rate goes down. So it's like a teeter totter. So we have a set dollar amount that we are allowed to levy in the city, plus our one percent. And as our levy goes up, our rate goes down to compensate. So it's just a kind of a balancing effect. So you can see how we are. We, in twenty twenty-three, we had a little bit of a peak. We dropped in twenty twenty-four, and then we're bouncing back up again in twenty twenty-five. Again, you can see on the levy side, we're dipping back down. So for twenty twenty-five, what we have included in the budget, the levy rate is three point two million. Our taxable assessed value is a little over four point six billion. And that includes twenty-one point five million in new construction. The estimated levy rate for next year is going to be just a little over seventy-seven cents per thousand dollars of assessed value. Our total assessed value has actually increased twenty twenty, or decreased, excuse me, twenty, no, increased from twenty twenty-four by ten point one percent. And I have another chart when I get to the very end that I'll show you kind of how the levy calculation takes place. So for sales taxes, the chart that you have here is just for our unrestricted sales taxes. And for twenty twenty-five, we're estimating five point six million, which is a decrease over twenty twenty-four estimated actuals by four point six percent. We have restricted sales taxes that aren't reflected in here. One that we had spoken about earlier was the HB fourteen oh six. We currently budget forty-five thousand dollars for that. And it's being currently used for low income rent relief. And HB fifteen ninety, that brings in just a little over six hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars, which can be used for affordable housing, housing-related services, and behavioral treatment. So for our utility taxes, we've got a couple of new ones on here that I'll point out, but our utility taxes are imposed on utilities such as electricity, natural gas, solid waste, cable, telephones, storm drainage, and cell phones. Two additional utility taxes, water and sewer, were added effective February first of this year. The rates for solid waste, cable, storm drainage, water and sewer are eight percent, while electricity, natural gas, telephones, and cellular phones are at six percent. For twenty twenty-five, our revenues are estimated to bring in just a little over three million dollars. This is just a graph that shows in total what the general fund revenues look like. You can see our major sources, taxes. We have licenses and permits that are business licenses, things of that nature. Intergovernmental, those are state shared revenues that we receive, like liquor excise tax, liquor profit tax, marijuana excise tax, as well as any grants that come into the general fund. Then we have charges for goods and services, and those are mainly our parks user fees. You can take aquatic center fees, athletics, recreations. And then our fines and forfeitures, those are our court fees. And miscellaneous is mostly interest income. We have a little bit of technology surcharge in there, and then also some park user fees like our rentals and things are in that category. So for our street funds, they have a couple of major revenue sources, the first being the T V D sales tax. And this is the one that we have effective, the additional zero point two percent in January of next year. So we're planning on bringing in a little over one point nine million dollars next year. And it can be used for transportation, maintenance, and improvement projects. And you can see in twenty twenty-three, that was a partial year. That's when we first started the point one percent. Twenty twenty-four, we received a full year of that, and then twenty twenty-five will have the full point three percent coming in. Another major revenue source in the street fund is the street fuel tax. This is a state shared revenue that we receive, and the forecast is provided to us by MRSC. Again, just another example of what is all in the street funds. The majority, again, is taxes, those street fuel taxes and the, or excuse me, just the sales taxes are in that category. Licenses and permits, we have some Comcast franchise money that comes in, about two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. Our intergovernmental is the the fuel tax, excuse me, and then miscellaneous is just some interest income that we receive. So for Development Services, their chart looks a little bit different because every year, the major categories can change. So what I have in front of you is just a little bit of their history from twenty sixteen through twenty twenty-five. Twenty sixteen to through twenty twenty-three are actuals, and then twenty twenty-four is estimated actuals, twenty twenty-five is what we're projecting for next year. And as you can see, this this fund kind of ebbs and flows. It's up and down every year. It's kind of all over the place. But next year, we are projecting an increase. The line chart that is over the bar graph is single-family homes that come in. And you can see we're projecting an increase of up to a hundred and eighty-three for next year is what we have in there. And the licenses and permits, those are including all permit types, their building permits, plumbing, mechanical, residential, and commercial land use. The charges for goods and services are things like plan review, mitigation fees for fire that come in, and inspections. And then the miscellaneous, again, is just the interest income that comes in. So Surface Water Management Fund, they have one main revenue source. It is the surface water drainage utility that comes in. That's in the purple there. That is assessed on the property tax statements annually. As you can see, in twenty twenty-three, you can see it kind of starts to level off twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five. That's because twenty twenty-three was the final year of the nine percent increases that we had through the drainage utility study that we had done several years ago. In twenty twenty-four, we adopted a COLA adjustment of four point six percent as part of the fee resolution. And I believe the plan is to bring that back the same way for twenty twenty-five, to request some kind of COLA in the fee resolution. And then do a utility drainage study in twenty twenty-five that would take effect in twenty twenty-six. Then just a little bit more information on the property tax levy. Just wanted to kind of show you how that works. Okay. So this is just walking you through the calculation. So in order to come up with our levy amount for next year, we take our levy amount from this year, plus the one percent. That's the thirty-two thousand one eighty-three, plus any new construction, which is the sixteen thousand seven hundred and one. And that gets me my twenty twenty-five property tax levy of three point two million. This is our assessed value that the county has given us, four point five billion. And with those calculations, our twenty twenty-five estimated levy rate is still a little over seventy-one cents. And just to show you an example of what that would look like. I've used a home value of nine hundred and fifty-four thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars, and that is the average new home price in Covington as of September. It's almost a million. Almost there. So with that increase that we're seeing in assessed value, that would change their assessment from six hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixteen cents up to seven hundred and forty-six dollars and forty cents. That's that ten point one percent change. And that is all I have for you for my staff report.
Great. Thank you, Casey.
Thank you.
The ground rules for public comment during the public hearing are as follows. When your name is called, step up to the microphone, give your name, and state whether you are a resident of the city of Covington or not. Please limit your comments to four minutes. The city clerk will set a timer that will go off when your time is up. When the timer goes off, please wind up promptly. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to address council concerning the two thousand twenty-five revenue sources and possible increase in property tax? Is there anybody online wishing to address council during this public hearing? Seeing nobody approach the podium or raise their hand, I declare this public hearing closed. Does council have any questions that they would like to ask Casey? I know we'll be discussing this during our budget workshop on Saturday, but is there anything that you would like Casey to bring to the workshop? Or any questions tonight? All right. Casey, there are no questions. Thank you very much for a very good report, and we look forward to, well, I look forward to at least all day Saturday. I can't speak for everybody else, but I do enjoy that. I've always enjoyed numbers. All right. Thank you all very much. Move to new business item number two. Consider an appointment to the Human Services Commission. Does council wish to take any action tonight? Debbie.
Thank you. Excuse me, just a second. I want to get this verbiage correct. I would nominate, nominate.
You can just say you'd like to.
I would like to appoint Kenneth Mutiga to fill position number two on the youth council with the term expiring June thirty.
Services. We're in Human Services.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
No, you're good. You're good. Does anybody wish to take action on Human Services Commission? If not, we can, oh, Beth?
Yeah.
I move to appoint Michaela Romero to fill position one on the Human Services Commission with a term expiring March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Second.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Michaela Romero to fill position one on the Human Services Commission. Beth, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yeah, it was really interesting, her comment about all the other work that she does in other cities, and then she had that moment of self-reflection that said, I probably should be painting something here in my own hometown, which is, which is great, but we all, we have to go through that every now and again. So and wanting to help. She's very familiar with policy at state level, she stated, but trying to make an impact at the local level. I think she'll bring a unique set of skills based on her her background and her perspective. And as she also mentioned that her and her family are not strangers to having to receive human services throughout their throughout her life, and so she can kind of look at it from both sides. I think, I think she should be very intentional.
Thank you, Beth. Christina, would you like to speak to your second?
Yes, please. I just thought Michaela was incredibly unique. Every one of her answers was something that I haven't heard before. I love her drive, and I love that she, she now has a six-year-old. She's like, I have twelve years to launch. The word launch, and then she referred it to it to herself in that with that verb too. But it, you know, I could learn from that, too. I have so many years to launch these individuals into adulthood, and I thought that was very intuitive. One of the coolest things that she said to me about what would, what do you, I'm so sorry. There it is. What is the most important function of human services? And it was very simple, but it was just like something that we don't hear all the time, and so that it was just designed for the most vulnerable, and that's who should reap the benefits, as we see in our previous meeting, but it was just so honest, so honest. And I think she's right. It would be a win-win for her and the city if she was on the Human Services Commission, and she's, she seems educated, she's well-rounded, and I think for sure, they will benefit from her on it.
Thank you, Christina. Is there anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? Right, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Michaela Romero to fill position number one on the Human Services Commission with a term expiring March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Congratulations, Michaela. Consider appointment, new business item number three is consider an appointment to the youth council. Debbie. No, you're very excited about it.
Okay, so now I move to appoint Kenneth Mutiga to fill the position number two on the youth council with the term expiring on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to appoint Kenneth Mutiga to fill position number two on the youth council with a term expiring June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six. Debbie, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, thank you. Kenneth was very impressive. Some of the things that came, came across right out of the chute was his professionalism for a young man, very confident and very mature for his age. Kenneth serves on the student council as a class officer. He has also worked with Rotary International. He has also worked with Rotary International. And he wants to give back to this community. He also spoke something that we hear a lot from The individuals that want to apply for our youth council and that is to help solve And support the mental health issues with the youth in our community. And he, he says that the Issues that he sees that we face are mental health and emotional intelligence. He wants to see us grow to have happy youth and with a better infrastructure and more programs for our youth. He, he works to set a good example for those around him. And I think as the way he comes across, he definitely Sets a very good example for what we would like all of our youth to aspire to be in Covington.
Thank you, Debbie. Joe, would you like to speak to your second?
What really stood out to me is that this young man has Labeled the biggest issue with our youth as mental health and emotional Maturity, and I think that is spot on. As someone who is in a classroom all day, I see that there are mental health struggles With our, with our students, not just in the Covington community, but all around us. And I think he has a great idea with creating a program that would allow students to post anonymously To a website and stating their issues that will help them get help, because a lot of people, the biggest issue With getting help is putting themselves out there, whereas if they put themselves out there anonymously, they might be able to, they might feel more comfortable. But Stating that mental health is a big issue in our community with our youth, I think is in One, very mature of him to understand that, but two, a, a big thing that we have been fighting for from this day as for years, and I think Starting with our youth is a great way to go, and I fully support him and his efforts to Find solutions for mental health struggles amongst his peers, and I think we should definitely be supporting him on that aspect.
Thank you, Joe. Is there anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? Christina?
I just want to go on record and say that Kenneth is presidential. Like, there's something about him that was very presidential. Maybe I'm speaking a speech here, I don't know, but it was just very A very pleasant interview.
I was going to say something similar to that, but I believe that Kenneth, I support this Nomination and I believe that Kenneth, if he wishes to, can go very far on helping Not only those in our community, but those out there, he has the passion And the willingness to help make a difference. I think this young man can really Make it happen. With that, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Kenneth Matega To fill position number two on the youth council with a term expiring June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty six. All those in favor state aye. Aye, any opposed? Congratulations, Kenneth. Next is a considerance ordinance amending sections fourteen dot three zero dot zero four zero. Section eighteen dot two zero, section eighteen dot two five dot zero three zero subsection A. And section eighteen dot three one dot one two zero of the Covington Municipal Code related to permanent supportive housing, Transitional housing, Emergency housing And emergency shelters in response to House Bill twelve twenty Pursuant to R C W thirty six dot seven zero A Thirty six dot seven zero Zero seven zero subsection two. Mark, did you write that?
Yeah.
No, actually Joe wrote it.
No.
And R C W three five A dot two one dot four three zero. Selena, it's all yours.
I do have to take a little bit of responsibility for that long, long ordinance intro, we'll do better next time.
No, I don't mind.
No, it's funny, Mark, Mark's probably laughing a little bit too. So all of that with, with the mayor just read off could be just summarized as step housing. So I've got a brief overview Tonight to go over the ordinance and the changes that's in front of the council. I do have Casey Bradfield from Burke Consulting, as you know, they work closely with us, they provide their expertise and a lot of their data analysis, so. Between the two of us, we will walk you through what is in front of you. So first of all, what is step housing? Basically, it's, it's shelter. Emergency shelter housing, transitional housing, emergency housing and permanent supportive housing. That acronym is based on the portions of those, those four types of housing. And ultimately, step housing is housing that supports people who are homeless or at risk of homelessness. And we saw this Come under H B twelve twenty originally in two thousand and twenty, and then again in two thousand and twenty one. Where basically directed all cities to begin to take their fair share of the housing needs that are Are required for our most vulnerable within the region. Historically, these have been very much in, you know, our kind of larger major cities. And the state pivoted that and said, everyone's going to participate in that. And there's a lot of reasons for that, we can dive into that more If necessary, but I do believe this council has maybe heard other presentations from A W C and others on this type of housing. And frankly, you know, it's just really important housing. Because it's a, it's a stopgap to help people from hopefully becoming chronically homeless. By allowing these housing types within our communities and our areas. That also allows people to move through the system as well and not maybe have to move their families or pick up their families and move to different areas. Should they, you know, eventually enter, let's say, at a transitional housing, Then you can move into permanent supportive and then the ideal situation is that you become into those income brackets, which I'll show a little bit later. Some people get to permanent supportive housing and that's maybe where they need to stay, but that idea and concept is that you're maybe not having to jump communities As well, and that's, that's a big aspect of this. So this is a little bit of history as far as where we were and where we're going with step housing. As I mentioned, H B twelve twenty Created the law that governs how cities can plan and regulate step housing. And with that became a myriad of steps that cities had to go through. And a lot of this work that we had to do for the step housing is what we talked really quickly about in the The comprehensive plan meeting we had at our last meeting, but it all works together. So basically, cities had to show that they had adequate land capacity And adequate provisions to allow this type of housing, meaning You know, we're going to allocate this housing to Covington, for example, and you have to show us you have Space for it, and you have to show us that you're not creating barriers for that to enter your city. As a result of that initial response to H B twelve twenty cities, Most cities issued what were interim zoning codes, so they just, they You know, created what was needed at the time to be compliant with H B twelve twenty. The state came back and said, hey, we're gonna do a little bit, little bit more work on this to help support cities on how These get implemented. And so from two thousand and twenty one really until two thousand and twenty three, Department of Commerce, who's the agency responsible for implementing state legislative land use actions And other things, they came out with guidance. So what do these rules really mean? What can cities really do? What must and shall you do in your comp plan and within your code? Then they developed a step model ordinance. And then through, through that time, King County also came out and said, okay, it's, it's one thing to say You have to allow this housing in a zoning capacity. It's another thing now, we're going to talk about what your proportionate share of the housing need is. I've got a slide that's going to talk about that. So we worked with King County, we got allocated our area median income bands. We refer to those as AMI bands or income bands. And then we, as a result of that, did a housing needs assessment because that's where we show we have the land capacity. We kind of did a current state assessment Of what, what is happening in Covington, what is our vulnerable populations, how many people are cost burden? What is the, you know, the demographics of our housing stock? And that all accumulates into information that becomes informative of how we move forward, and that's also embedded in your comp plan. So what it really came out at the end of the day between the guidance and the model ordinance Is that our in, our interim ordinance that we adopted in two thousand and twenty one and subsequently kept renewing year over year No longer met the requirements, it was actually too restrictive. And so based on that new information, what you have before you Tonight, in case we'll go in a little bit more depth later Is a code provision that becomes compliant With the state law and then still addresses our requirements. So when I talk about requirements, this is what I'm talking about. You are going to see this chart at every turn from me, from now until probably the end of two thousand and twenty five. This chart here is really informing everything that we're doing from looking at Our step supportive housing, our middle housing, which is coming to you in June. It is the baseline in our comprehensive plan for growth. And this is basically Covington's fair share of how we take that forty three hundred and some Housing units that were allocated to us as part of the buildable lands program. And this is how they break it down for us. So now again, These numbers can feel overwhelming and like, how are you ever going to achieve them, right? Those are questions we consistently ask ourselves. And I would just implore that the answer to that is We do the best with what we can and what we have, we don't create barriers and we ensure that we're compliant. And then hopefully the market in the region will start to kind of fill in those gaps. What I did below here, this applicable regulations, Something that came up during the, the comp plan discussion that I thought I might want to just highlight is a little bit of how you get there, right? So Across the bottom there are all the AMI bands, the number below that right now is the median income for a family of four to qualify For that housing within that income band. So for example, eighty one to a hundred AMI, you can make ninety eight thousand to a hundred and twenty two thousand And qualify for that level of housing. So how does that housing then get promoted and built? Well, the only thing we can control in that whole system is in fact our zoning regulations, right? So people come in, what's their experience, where can those housing units go? What requirements do we have on them and then the permitting process? And so below that, what you see in those boxes are all the different State mandates that are built in to support that. So tonight we're talking about twelve twenty. I'm going to be coming back to you next year early to talk about middle housing and then ADUs. And the idea and the concept is around that, then we start to create a zoning code, Land use regulations that allow for that housing To come into Covington When it's ready. And I just want to point out that under the step, the two things we're looking at is the permanent supportive housing, so that's the five hundred and thirty five units. The blue one thousand units is non-permanent supportive, that's just income housing from zero to thirty percent, which is Market, well, not market housing, but zero to thirty, non-supportive. And then the emergency beds, the eight hundred and twenty four. Emergency beds are not included in our growth allocation, meaning they're not in that original forty three hundred, I think it's forty three, ten. I should know this number by heart by now, I apologize. That number is not included in our baseline growth allocation, it is in addition to. This is my attempt At a visual of just really how this all, this kind of system works for, for when we talk about zoning regulations. Really what you have there in the middle, as you see all the arrows coming in and out of, is that buildable lands Urban growth targets, and that's an exercise we start in two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen. That's when the state says Covington, this is what you need to plan for, be ready for For your jobs and your housing. Then we did all those things I talked about, a land capacity, housing needs assessment, so then we start to see what do we have now, what's our current state? What income brackets are we Maybe not meeting, which ones have we already met? That data and information helps inform the King County housing allocation, so then they run those numbers. That's why on our, our allocation, we don't really have anything for, for fifty to eighty because we've met that already, given the existing housing Within Covington, so we technically got credit for that. And then that information informs your step housing and then your housing element and all of that comes together, so. Kind of built this today hoping that might give a good overview. I think what it just shows is there's a lot of interconnectedness And relationships between all of the work That we've been working hard on the last few years, and it's a lot. Lot of data, there's a lot of data in this slide. And then real quickly, Step oversight and accountability. I, I wanted to include this slide because this is really a different time for us to talk about Accountability when it comes to our zoning regulations. So historically, for as long as I've been doing this, we get the housing growth mandate, Cities make their plans in our comp plan, we implement zoning and we move on, right? And then we do this step again every ten years where we say, what's our current state, what growth can we take, how much land do we have left? And so on and so on, and that's been the conversation. With the passage of twelve twenty and the other roughly six or seven housing mandates, They're really driving towards this affordability or this idea that we also have supply and demand, and as you heard tonight, what our housing costs, You know, in Covington, it's becoming a real issue. So, so now there's a little bit more oversight and accountability As far as cities meeting or aiming to meet Working to meet those targets. So P S R C, Southern Regional Council, Theirs is to make sure that our housing goals align with regional goals, so that's, that's one of their requirements. They're going to have housing capacity reports that we're going to have to give them to show where we are, how we're meeting and what we're contributing to. That housing capacity report also is embedded where we can talk about our relationship with skip. If you remember Reagan and, and our lobbyists worked really hard to get some language in there around cities like us that contribute outside of our boundaries That we are in fact contributing, right? And so That P S R C recognizes that. The King County Housing Committee is a very different process than, than we've had before. So now King County looks at our, our comprehensive plan housing element. They provide feedback on that. It's their income bands that they gave, and so they're going to be auditing us in five years, so We don't know what that's going to look like. They've just said expect to be audited, and I know that that office and committee are looking at what that means. There has been some talk about if cities aren't meeting those targets or we're, we're not, then they'll come in and audit our codes, Determine if we have barriers and then give that feedback. I don't know, that is to be seen, that's just what's being said, I don't want to not put that on your radar though. Department of Commerce, really they're just the model folks, they're like, this is how you do it, this is how it's done. They always look at our codes, every code that we ever, we ever create in Covington regarding zoning, they evaluate that, they have questions, they give feedback. Their goal is just, are you compliant? One new thing that was introduced this, last year was a mediation program Which basically says that Department of Commerce now has authority to intervene at a city level if a city is making Step housing difficult to implement. And so the concept around, idea around that is that they would mediate Any of those difficulties that say a developer Or otherwise is having with getting permitted. I do know there's some other bills about them stepping in and doing the permitting, if that's what they're saying again. That, that they might be driving towards next year, but I think if cities can show we're doing what we're asked, hopefully that's not where we have to go. And then lastly is us. What are we responsible and accountable for? Obviously, we're accountable to our city and our constituents and, and the folks that, that consider Covington a place for them. But from the, the regulation standpoint, it's just making sure that we can show those alignments, we show our work. We show that we are compliant. We're ensuring that those regulations allow step housing And that we're not creating barriers that would otherwise not align with what was given to us from the state And overall just compliance, right? I, I also want to just step out and just talk a little bit about really quickly before I hand this over to Casey is that This feels like it's very much an exercise because it's a mandate, right? And we kind of have to do what we're told to do, and I'm up here telling you the why. There is, there is a bigger, longer game, right, in the fact that providing housing and options for folks is important, it's good planning. And so what we've done tonight with the planning commission has done is given you An ordinance within the bounds of their Allowed abilities That shows compliance, but they also don't have a ton of alternatives, right? So with that, I'm going to hand that over to Casey and she's Going to dig in a little bit more. Before I do that, I did just add this relevant laws for citing, just as a FYI, there's a longer list in your packet. Again, the takeaway from here is if you look at all those R C Ws, all the laws around this are embedded throughout the R C Ws, unfortunately, it's not in one Lovely location, so we've done our best to compile all of that into the ordinance tonight. So Casey, I'm going to hand this over to you.
Okay, thank you, Selena, and it's nice to be with you tonight, council members. And Selena, where, did you want me to talk more about the slide that was just up, or should I Move to this one?
I think you can move to this one, thank you.
Okay. So one thing that Burke did to, to help The city with the process of updating the step housing code was to do a gap analysis. We took a look at the We took a look at the interim ordinance that Selena mentioned that the city had adopted back in twenty twenty one after House Bill twelve twenty was first adopted. And and then we compared that to the the current uh standards. And as Selena mentioned earlier, because of the new information that's come out since that bill was first passed, there there were some changes that needed to be made to ensure compliance with with state law. And the biggest change that needed to be made was removing uh barriers so that the city could meet its housing targets and was not um um hindering development of these housing types. So under the the law, there's um certain types of step housing that have to be allowed in certain zones. The emergency housing and emergency shelter has to be allowed in any zone where hotels are allowed. And then the other types of step housing, transitional housing and permanent supportive housing need to be allowed in any zone that allows residential uses or hotels. And we're not recommending any changes uh from the interim ordinance on that. The interim ordinance was was good in that regard. The the biggest change that we are recommending from the interim ordinance is taking out a lot of other restrictions. For instance, there were restrictions on how close these types of housing could be to each other, how many people could be there. There was a requirement to have an operational plan for some of the step housing types. And based on the the new guidance, we we took those things out and regulated them more similarly to to any type of housing. When we sent the draft code that the planning commission had recommended to Commerce for comments, one thing we heard was that the city needed to allow a density bonus for affordable housing on properties controlled by religious institutions. And that is because of one of the state laws on the prior slide that Selena mentioned. So we did make that edit uh to ensure we were responding to their their feedback. Another thing the planning commission did is they evaluated having a setback. Um, uh eight hundred and eighty foot buffer from from schools and religious institutions. And that is something that in the Commerce Guidance, you know, the state says you could consider this. Um, but the planning commission took a close look at that and and did not recommend um having that regulation in there. They felt that it it wasn't needed for for this community. Next slide. So to to recap, um, a few considerations for adopting the code is that the planning commission has already discussed the draft code, held a public hearing and recommended it to council. Uh, this Department of Commerce has also reviewed and um provided the comments that have been addressed in the version that's in your packet tonight. So the next step is to discuss with the city council and then adopt by the end of the year. The city does need to adopt this code as part of the the whole periodic update comprehensive plan package. Anything to add, Selena?
Um, just to Casey's last sentence about why it has to be adopted with the comp plan, it's because we have to show that we can accommodate the housing that was allocated to us. So it's a checks and balance. And I think that concludes our presentation.
Thank you. Uh, any questions? Christina?
Um, can you go back one slide to slide eight? Um, this was mentioned, it was mentioned that it wasn't um in in involved earlier or wasn't brought to the plan update. But now it is. I'm just curious what that means. What is the the second to last one, the density bonus for? What does that even mean?
Density boost for affordable housing. So in i- in your churches real are are situated in zones throughout the city, so like an RE twelve, you know, whatever. Um, and in those zones under normal development, they're really incentive. So it says that if you want to go do X then um and you want to provide um affordable housing, then you can go get these as incentives. Right? Well, we have that in our in our um residential code. We have no um affordability incentives in our downtown code. And so as part of this update, uh, that language about um religious organizations getting a density bonus was built into the downtown code. Um,
Now they do.
And so now they do. So what that means, and I actually have a slide here because I thought we might end up talking about the eight hundred and eighty. But um where that would apply to are churches that are in our downtown. So um the one that's on Southeast Wax Road, they would be entitled to a density bonus pursuant to this law where today they would not, as the code is written.
Understood. Thank you.
Any other questions for Selena? Jennifer?
Uh, why just religious organizations?
Oh, this is a really good question. Um, so the reason that we're talking about schools and churches is goes back to the term community protection zone. So under the RCW
I I read all that in the
Yeah.
in that, but I I was curious why just applies to the
Yes. So so under the Commerce Guidance, there is um discussion and 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 understanding that they anticipate a lot of our religious organizations are actually going to be the ones that step in and do permanent supportive housing and emergency beds. Um, so that could be churches, you know, be- because they actually have a lot of land within a lot of suburban areas. So when you look at land capacity and organizations that are essentially stood up to do such type of housing or provide such types of services, they see religious organizations carrying a big um, a big aspect of that permanent supporting and emergency housing. And or having the land available in suburban areas to do so.
So this is just removing a barrier slash providing an incentive to get them to do it.
Potentially, yes.
Other organizations. I I just, it's just interesting me to why you're limited to just religious organizations.
Well, 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 that's another great question. So when we come back for middle housing, what you are likely going to see from the planning commission and staff is that we add affordability bonuses into our downtown plan. So that way, any developer, anyone coming in could then get, provide affordable housing within their unit, their their building and get incentives for that. That's something that the planning commission has identified a need for. Um, but because the model ordinance just talks about religious organizations actually taking on a lot of this potentially because they're like, who's going to build it? Where's it going to come from? And they, the philanthropic religious organizations are what they've identified that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right. Thank you.
I might be putting the cart before the horse, but since since you mentioned what the planning commission will be working on and affordable housing, we saw this potentially happen with one of the units in the downtown or where the rent might be affordable, but any of the additional parking garage, the car, all of that went through the roof and and effectively it was an increase in rent, even though technically on paper it wasn't. Is there an opportunity for us to um prevent that from happening by writing things into the code or having you all get it? Because that's just then you kind of whack a mole. That's what we're trying to achieve, right?
Yeah, and I and and Mark, feel free to correct me, but my understanding is when that incident occurred, we looked into the ability and we reached out to the owners. There's nothing in their financing or funding that requires that. Um, and that's like us coming in and regulating private parking garages. Just because it's an affordable unit, it cannot be treated any differently than a market rate apartment. So if we want to go regulate parking there, then you regulate it everywhere. That that is now what we what we say. Um, and so now that that's an unfortunate event in that regard. Um, but my understanding based on when we studied it for that particular incident is that we we don't have the ability to come in and and make that happen. Parking garages are really expensive too. To build and construct.
Well, the
Yeah. Yeah.
Anybody else have questions? All right, uh, before us is the possibility to pass an ordinance amending the multiple sections in chapter eighteen point two zero Covington Municipal Code, Covington Municipal Code eighteen dot two five dot zero three zero and Covington Municipal Code eighteen dot three one dot one two zero related to House Bill one two two zero, requirements for permanent supportive housing, transitional housing, emergency housing and emergency shelters. Council wish to take action tonight.
So moved.
Been moved and seconded. Jennifer would like to speak to your motion.
Yes, thank you so much for this very thorough um amendment. I would like to call, but I really appreciate the commission's evaluation of um I think they were community protection zones, yeah. Um, I completely agree that those reinforce stigma associated with um these type of housing units, and I really applaud um the commission's efforts in in recognizing that, um, as well as, you know, the the other reasons cited. But for me, that really stood out as uh significant and putting that out there on paper, um, even though it doesn't necessarily align perfectly with the mandate, I appreciate it and support it.
Thank you, Jennifer. Beth, would you like to speak to your second?
Well, time has come. We've been
Yeah.
We've been um in a holding pattern, trying to and figure out, and I say we, I mean you all, because the planning commission and the planning department's been doing a fantastic job keeping us updated. And I know it's been a really sticky wicket with mandates that come down without direction now that we're getting the stuffs out and um we need to pass it to be compliant. So um, how will you incorporate that in our uh overall plan is is important, so.
Thank you, Beth. Anybody else wish to speak for against the motion? Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I appreciate all the work uh that's going into this and recognize that, you know, we're being basically told we have to do this. Um, I'm going to support this resolution. Um, however, I'm skeptical. It's if we're dependent upon builders, I'm going to just keep beating this dead horse. Um, I I hope the next time we do our comp plan and we have to look at this, that we go back and look at what actually changed because I I don't believe, to be honest, this is going to change anything. Builders are going to build the houses they want, and if there's not a hammer or any requirement, we can, I I I don't, it makes us feel good that we're doing this, but I don't think it's going to really change. I mean, it's nine hundred and fifty four thousand dollars for an average house in Covington. That, and that's not changing. That's just continues to go on. And that's, those are the houses that I think builders want to build. Um, so I I'm going to vote for it because we're required to. Um, but I I just, I don't, I don't think, huh, I, well, you know what I think? I don't think it's gonna, I don't think it's gonna help.
Anybody else wish to speak for against the motion? I will support it and I can't top what Sean just said. Um, but what you wrote on this, I don't have a problem with this because it's great to have all this information that I've read because it lets our residents and our public know what we're discussing. So you don't need to change it. All right. Been moved and seconded to pass an ordinance amending multiple sections of chapter eighteen dot two zero Covington Municipal Code, Covington Municipal Code eighteen dot two five dot zero three zero and the Covington Municipal Code eighteen dot three one dot one two zero related to House Bill one two two zero, requirements for permanent supportive housing, transitional housing, emergency housing and emergency shelters. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Thank you very much and thank you for all the hard work, Selena, the planning commission and Casey and Burke, thank you as well. Next is new business item number five, consider an ordinance to amend chapters two point five zero and two point eight zero of the Covington Municipal Code to update the emergency management procedures. Don?
My code references were a lot shorter than Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Selena. So this item tonight is basically a housekeeping of our code as it relates to emergency management. Our code had a separate Department of Emergency Management, uh, along with a separate director, as it was uh mentioned in code. Emergency management actually operates as a division uh within Public Works instead of a different department. So the changes within is basically uh aligning with that practice along with some other uh minor uh changes in the code. And so that's pretty much what this does is to kind of align with those uh practices. And so I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone has.
Does anybody have any questions for Don tonight? All right, seeing none. Thank you, Don, for bringing this to us. Uh, council forces the potential to adopt an ordinance amending chapters two dot five zero and two dot eight zero of the Covington Municipal Code. Is there a council wish to take action?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Beth, would you like to speak to your motion?
No, our subject matter expert is getting us uh, making it compliant to making it fit what we need to have it fit in actuality. So good to have it on.
Thank you. Thank you, Beth. Jennifer would like to speak to your second.
Um, I appreciate uh all the work that is consistently done to keep our ordinances neat and tidy. So thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak for against the motion? It's been moved and seconded to adopt an ordinance amending chapters two dot five zero and two dot eight zero of the Covington Municipal Code. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Next is new business item number six, two thousand twenty four appointments to the regional forums. You have in here your uh packet or online the regional forum or regional groups that we belong to. Um, I'm going to start with Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority. Sean, you are the current actually first of this council wish, is it okay if I just go through each of these? I'm just going to take control.
Oh, my God.
Yeah. Regional sound, Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority. Sean, do you wish to continue that?
Uh, yes, please.
Thank you. Uh, we'll go up to MISMAC, Metropolitan Solid Waste Management Advisory Committee. Uh, meets on the second Friday of the month. Um, currently we have Dawn and Shelley on there. Does council, anybody on council able to take that on? Dawn and Shelley, are you both able to continue that?
Uh, yes, just one thing to just to let you know, just FYI, coming uh January, uh, those meetings will be moving to midweek, like Wednesday? I can't remember exactly, but anyway, just second, yeah. So it's going from Fridays to basically Wednesday.
Okay. Perfect. Does it make a difference to anybody? All right. Thank you for both being able to do that. South County Area Transportation Board, known as Skateboard. Debbie, are you currently the member? Are you still able to do that? You still wish to?
I wish to. Thank you.
And uh, is there anybody that wishes to be alternate? Otherwise, we'll have Bob be if he's able to. He's not here, so he automatically gets Thank you. Uh, next is Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee, known as PIC. Um, right now we have Joe and Christina. Joe, do you wish to continue being the uh member?
Yeah, at least for a little bit longer.
Okay. Well, it's good because you're
Yeah.
next in line to be chair.
Yeah, so I'll stick around for a little while.
And if you're chair, that means you'll be on the Sound Cities Board. Uh, Christina, do you wish to still be second alternate? Uh, Water Resource Inventory Area Nine, known as Ryra Nine Forum. We have Jennifer and Sean. Jennifer?
Yep, we meet tomorrow.
All right, and Sean, do you
Yep.
And we have South King Housing and Homelessness Partners, known as Skip. We have Christina and Debbie. Christina, do you wish to still be the member?
I do.
And Debbie, do you wish to be alternate? Okay. All right, and then the next ones on the back are pointed through SCA, so you have to apply for those. Uh, I did apply to uh reapply to be on the Puget Sound Regional Council Executive Board. Um, I haven't, I think that goes to PIC in November. Is that correct?
Uh, probably December.
Okay, oh, that's right. They extended it to the
Yeah.
October thirty first.
Yeah, because I still have to reapply for RTC.
Okay, so um that will come back if for approvals. And so if you wish to apply for any of the boards, you have until October thirty first. They extended it um for They extended it um, for those SCA. All right, I. So we have before us to take action to appoint council members to the regional forums. And I will list that again. So um, for MISMAC, Dawn is the member. And Shelley is the alternate. For Skateboard, Debbie is the member. Bob Linskoff as the alternate. For PIC, Joe is the member, Christina as the alternate. For Ryra Nine, Jennifer as the member, Sean as the alternate. For Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority, Sean as the member. And then for Skip, Christina as the member and Debbie as the alternate. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
Been moved and seconded. Beth, would you like to speak to your motion?
Everybody's doing a great job and if they want to keep down, keep it on, let's.
Christina, would you like to speak to your second?
Keep on keeping on.
Okay. Anybody else wish to speak for or against the motion? All right, it's been moved and seconded to appoint council members to the regional forums as stated. All those in favor state aye? Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Thank you all very much. Next is new business item number seven, discuss the new two thousand twenty five solid waste rates. I will recuse myself and hand this over to Sean. And I will be in the other room.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, I'll turn it over to Regan. Oh, to Dawn. Good, good.
Thank you, Mayor Protim Smith and council. Uh, it's that time of year to look at um, the solid waste rates. Um, that are allowed to go into place each year based on CPI increase. Also, the um, uh, fixed annual charge that was kind of the change of how they did. Uh, their rate structure to um, from being all tip tipping fees to a fixed annual charge. So that's already allowed per our contract, but just to kind of um. Just review that, that's in here just to um, go over that, just so um, you know about it. Um, the CPI is like three point six three percent that would be going into effect. And then the disposal, the um, FAC part of that increases that to a little over five percent overall. For those price um, for those increases. Uh, so that will go into effect already as part of the contract uh, on January first. Um, what council does need to consider is the request from um. Uh, Republic Services for the continuation of the recycling processing charge. So last year it was a dollar fifty four per residential customer per month. For uh, for, yeah, residential um, charge. And then the multifamily commercial charge was five dollars and three cents per cubic yard. Uh, uh, was twenty twenty four. So twenty twenty five, that's going for the residential is going up. Uh, four cents, so from one dollar fifty four cents to one dollar fifty eight cents per month. Um, and then the um, commercial would be going from five point. Five dollars and three cents per cubic yard to five dollars and twenty four cents, so increasing twenty one cents per cubic yard. So that would be the aspect of that we would need um, council's approval to continue that. That was um. Uh, on a year to year basis, and so this would be, uh, again, if approved, would go into effect January first and would be in effect. Through uh, December thirty first, twenty twenty five. Uh, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Dawn? No. What happens if we don't approve it?
Um, that would just basically, that would be no longer uh, be um, part of the the fee. And that's the piece that um. Republic Service had had asked because of the cost of the processing. Um, if you remember a couple of years ago, um, they came in and basically says when the contract was first put in. Uh, recycling cost, uh, that that product was um. More valuable, they got more out of it, and now they're, it's costing more.
Right.
And so it's it's basically trying to uh, offset that aspect, so.
Um, probably should have been more clear. Would it stay at the one fifty four rate? And then two, could Republic say we're not doing recycling anymore at some point?
Yeah, I'm not really sure what the, all the ramifications of that would be, to be totally honest with you. Um, I I would imagine that the request, uh, the the rate that's in effect, the one, even the one fifty uh. Uh, one fifty four is also right now only in effect until the end of this year, so.
So there may be enough, yeah.
Right, so it would, it would have to be enacted even if it's at one fifty four or whatever it's enacted at. It would have to go into effect um, uh, next year or be allowed to go into effect starting next year.
Um, then maybe this is something you can answer, but that. Cost seems to keep going up and, you know, we thought it had to do with, um, what was it, China Sword?
China Sword.
Um, but that market seems to be not coming back as quickly. I'm just, if you ever hear any rumblings about, you know, they're looking at dropping recycling or, you know. What, it just would be interesting for us to know that. I'm concerned about them continually, I'm just wondering if this is even getting recycled to some sometimes, so.
Right, and there are a lot of things right now, even uh, in the recycling market right now. Glass is uh, one of the things that they are looking at right now too, because some of the even local glass uh, recycler. Um, um, and actually Shelley probably know more of this than I do. But um, I think they're kind of going out of business or they um.
Shelley, could you please speak into the microphone?
And it's in Seattle and they've shut down their um, production right now. And one of the main things that they're saying is that the wine industry is not purchasing glass from. Locally, they're purchasing it from like China and Mexico and other places. So there's, there's a roundtable group that gets together every couple of weeks and gives updates on it. And they're hoping that they can start back up sometime after the first due year, but they may not fully. Start up all of their furnaces, so they might just start out kind of slow. So some of the glass is getting stored. Um, SPU has a site in Seattle that they're, they're working on getting permitting to store glass there. But some of the glass is being used um, for road base at the.
I was wondering about that.
At the um, facilities, the recycling facilities or the, not the recycling, the. Where they take the. Landfills. They're using it for road base. So they're trying to find other sources to use their class.
So then the only reason I brought that up is just the fact that there are more challenges that we're seeing that's just changing. Like how could the market of this is now changed or not, you know, so. There are different pieces and I'm not sure the breakdown of exactly of all of the, all of it. But there are some pieces that they're, they're asking that it's still, you know, that increase or there are costs for dealing with um, recycled goods.
All right. Any other question? Yeah, Debbie.
So just to summarize, that the alternative to not approving this would be our residents can't recycle anymore. It's not going to get picked up.
No, that wouldn't be the case. They would just be taking that loss as far as.
Well, yeah, okay. And then they won't want to continue to do that.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, and no other questions? Um, does the council wish to take action? Uh, maybe I should read it. Um, so.
We're used to Jeff reading it for us.
Yeah, exactly. So um, before us is a motion uh, to allow Republic Services to increase the recycling process. And charge to one dollar fifty eight cents per month for single family residential. And five dollars and twenty four per cubic yard for multifamily commercial through December thirty first, twenty twenty five. And I didn't see who was, who.
So moved.
Okay, seconded, okay. Uh, it's been moved and seconded. Christina, you want to speak to your motion?
I like when my garbage gets picked up, man, especially when we're cycling. Um, I mean, look around, look what's happening in the market. It's not something we cannot approve. Um, things are increasing everywhere, so as they should, well, not should, but would every public as well. We must.
Thank you. Debbie, you speak to your second?
Well, with the rate increase, um, it's within our contract that they do get to take that CPI, so. Um, and with the recycling fee. I just really hope we don't ever get to a place in time where no one wants to take our recycling and it's all going into a landfill. So I think we support this as long as we can, yeah.
Thank you. Anybody else? Um, yeah, Jennifer?
Yeah, I recently, I've been to a couple of um, areas. Where recycling has not been um. I guess easily accessible and it it it's quite shocking to me, you know. At one of the places we actually bagged it up and I put it in the car because it was so much, I just could not stomach putting it in the trash. But it really made me appreciate the ease that we have and not just recycling. But also, I mean, my in-laws live down in Gig Harbor and they have to take their glass separately. I mean, it's so easy for us. And uh, we really need to keep that accessibility for our residents and, you know, I'll be the tree hugger here for our planet. So um, yeah, I support it as well.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yeah, Beth?
Uh, we'll just tag on to that is that uh, with King County, there is that initiative to try to hit zero waste. Zero additional to the landfill, right? We want to try to keep as much out, so. I'm in the the Jennifer camp of tree hugging and we need to do what we can. Those things spill up quickly and then they have to find another landfill and then we're stuck with even more planning issues and make that happen, so.
Anyone else? Okay, uh, it's been moved and seconded to allow Republic Services to increase the recycle processing charge to one fifty eight per month. For single family residential and five dollars and twenty four cents per cubic yard for multifamily commercial through December thirty first. Twenty twenty five. All those in favors uh, state aye? Aye. Any opposed? All right, then pass. Thank you.
Have ever taken an hour. I get more than four hours sleep a night, it's a miracle. Thank you. Well, that concludes all of our new business. Did you finish the rest of the meeting?
We did, yeah.
Oh, great.
You know, no, we decided, we extended it by three hours.
Executive session.
All right. Well, thank you all very much. Uh, that concludes all of our new business. Uh, looking at future agenda items, we do have our budget workshop this Saturday. And then our next meeting is on November twelfth. Does council wish to see anything on a future agenda?
Um, I just had a question. I know we had discussed that the RFA come and present. Do we know, has that gotten on schedule for? Okay, so it's not this next one, but okay, that's fine. Oh, it is, okay. All right, great. Anything else? No, that's it. All right, let's move to council staff comments. Adam.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, Mr. Council and the council, sorry, the council. Uh, the county had a uh, Faith in Blue event, um, I believe it was last week. Uh, where they brought in church leaders, uh, worship leaders of all sorts in to talk about what. Uh, the sheriff's office and uh, faith communities could do to partner together. Uh, it's given me some ideas that we could work with the human services to work with our local uh, churches here to see. If we can uh, both provide service to the people that go to church that need the service and on the other end. Uh, uh, the churches could fill in where we have some gaps, so that's something that uh, I'll be working with Julie and Darren on here. In the coming weeks, but just wanted to let you know.
Great, that's great. Thank you. Ethan?
Yeah, hi Mayor, hi council. Um, Connie mentioned this earlier during the Parks and Recreation Commission report. But um, we do have the ribbon cutting event for the Founders Park Phase One project coming up on Monday at four forty five. It will, of course, be at the park, Founders Park. Um, we're hoping for nice weather, but if it's not, there's not a whole lot of cover there, so dress for the weather. Um, and I also want to mention that um, while we've gotten to a point that we're going to be able to open the park to the public. Following the ribbon cutting, uh, we are still working through a few punch list items with the contractor. So if you see a few items out there that don't look like they're really finished, we know and we're working on those and those should be done in the the near future. We think we can uh, complete those safely with the park being open. Um, and that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Ethan. Dawn?
Uh, just piggybacking on the um, ribbon cutting also for five sixteen project. So looking forward to all those that can make it um, at four o'clock, so thank you, that's it.
Great, thanks, Dawn. Selena?
No comments tonight, thank you.
Thanks, Selena. Casey?
Nothing for me tonight either, thank you.
Thank you. Mark?
Good evening, Mayor Ignorant Council. Um, I just wanted to take a second to thank you all for taking action at the last meeting. To approve the submission and joining of the, with the city of Kirkland and the amicus brief in the Kroger-Alberson's merger case. That's pending before King County Superior Court. And it, we've submitted it on Monday. It was submitted to the court filed. And so now the court has all the information about the potential impacts that the Kroger-Alberson's merger could have on local jurisdictions. Including the effects on Covington. And other than that, um, I have, there's no executive session and I have no additional comment.
Thank you, Mark, and thank you for bringing that to us about the Kroger merger. Um, I actually had somebody in Safeway thank us for doing that. Regan?
Nothing for me tonight, thanks, man.
Thanks, Regan. Krista?
I am looking forward to our budget workshop on Saturday and we will have breakfast served at seven thirty and we'll also have lunch served. So it's going to be much like what we've done in the past unless I receive any special requests.
That works for me. That's the only reason I'm showing up.
Love it, thank you.
All right, thank you. Christina?
Um, I too am looking forward to the Saturday. I hope that somebody opens up a file or a room or a cabinet and is like, wow, look. One point five million at least, but yeah, anyhow. Never looking forward to cutting things, but that's what we've got to do and we do it every year and we've got to be good stewards of our cities finances, so. See you all then.
Thanks, Christina.
My request.
Beth?
Same, same as everyone. The budget workshop on on Saturday and that'll be some interesting conversations. We were at um, the SCA networking um, dinner last week. Um, and which was a fantastic presentation. Um. I don't have both of their names, but uh, Rolf Meyer and Mohammed and I, I don't remember his last name. But the the two gentlemen that were on opposing sides of um, negotiating the end of apartheid. And it was just really amazing to hear their transformative journey from being, um, you know, seeing each other as potential enemies. To to collaborating and now they're lifelong friends and it was so inspiring to hear their process. And what it requires for all of us in this day and age to listen to people that may not have our same views. And trying to put yourself in their shoes and have compassion, grace, and empathy for each other. Because the reality is everybody wants the same thing. We just have different ways of trying to get there. Um, but also before that, before that happened, I know was talking to a couple of other city leaders and some of the drastic measures they're taking. Um, to make their budget balance and I. I don't expect that we would need to do that and I hope that we we never will, but I feel fortunate that we have. Uh, a team of, on our, our staff that is understanding what the priorities are and those priorities are coming from our residents. It's not just us personally up here, um, but also looking at ways to make that happen and still keep things whole as much as possible. So we'll, we'll see how things shake out on on Saturday, but. Is that it? Oh, we missed the comet. Oh, darn, I was going to say, well, we might be able to have a, uh, may, maybe we'll see that comet and then have a fun.
Thanks Beth, Sean.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, the only thing I have tonight, the Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority met last Wednesday, we held our public hearing as required on the fire benefit charge. And happy to hear that the RFA will be at our next meeting to kind of explain that benefit charge, it's very similar to our, kind of our levy we passed, that there's the positives, our, one side goes up, the other side goes down, so you'll see that coming up next, at our next meeting in November, so I think that is the major indicator of the last meeting, so.
Thanks Sean, Debbie.
Thank you, well, we had fun working at cleaning up some of the streets and it's always good, just, I mean, we're doing good for our community, but it's always fun just working with other council members and getting a chance to just chat. But kind of a common thread I'm seeing is like two weeks before, the Rotary did street cleanup and we're finding less and less litter, so that's a really good sign, and I just want to really thank Jennifer Leaden for the the great job she did in organizing and setting up for Saturday, she's just, she's a jewel. On skateboard, we, we have worked to finalize our legislative priorities and we took people that wanted to be on a committee to just kind of wordsmith it a little bit and, and get it done, so I'm on that committee. And then we're gonna get the word out here pretty quick that the Rotary is putting on our annual Veterans Day commemora- commemoration, it'll be on eleven eleven at eleven AM at CCP and we've got a guest speaker that, we've got retired Air Force officer that's gonna speak, Covington resident and do our typical flag retirement and we're, we're, that's a city and Rotary event that we're putting on, so all of the veterans in our, in our city staff and group, please try and make a, a point to come out and the Rotary is also working with another group to try and really put our arms around the Tohoma Cemetery volunteers, and we've got the volunteers that we all see when we go to a memorial service there and we've got the honor guards that come out and do a fantastic job, they, some of them are like eighty and ninety years old and they're, they're volunteers, they get paid nothing, they use their own gas money, they come out at the drop of a hat when there's a burial and they're, they're short a person. What they're finding is that they're aging out and there is no one coming in behind them and they need help just getting the word out that they've got a lot of volunteer opportunities from painting benches to helping at the, the check-in gate. So the city is gonna play a little bit of a role in this at no cost and the Rotary and it's actually Ed Leon that's trying to just let that treasure in our community, in our city, know that they are well respected and they really are part of our community. So there will be another event coming up, it's not for general attendance, but it's to honor and celebrate those that work there and that the city's gonna help host that as well.
Thanks Debbie, Jennifer.
I'm sorry I missed the litter pickup, I actually do enjoy those. And I noticed last month when I did it with the Girl Scouts, there was a lot but it doesn't make sense, there was definitely less litter, we beelined to the end of Wax because last so much litter across the street from Station By Vintage. Quite a bit of litter there at Station By Vintage, but I mean, nothing like previous pickups, so I agree, it is much, much cleaner, so yes, I'm looking forward to Saturday except for that email that Reagan sent. I don't know if I should look at it now or just wait and rip the Band-Aid off Saturday morning, that is my least favorite activity is going through and deciding what to cut, so. But I appreciate you putting together some ideas for us.
Thanks Jennifer, Joe.
We had our first RTC meeting since July last week. We, and that wasn't even supposed to happen until next month because they were King County Council member in charge of the committee, I thought that we all needed to be working, we're concentrating our budgets, but after much reach out from the members changed, mind was changed and we had our meeting. And we talked about staffing levels with transit or King County Metro and how we're working on that. There was a communication from the CEO or of of Metro that trip hours are increasing, just not here. But they're increasing in Seattle. So that's good, that Seattle's getting that, but I did make the request of when will we see more trip hours out in southeast King County, because I made the statement that on a Saturday with all the construction on Highway eighteen, on a Saturday or Sunday when I have to take my oldest to work in North Bend, that for some odd reason, everyone has to gawk at the non-existent construction that's happening because the construction workers have taken the day off and they still have to look at all the construction happening on Highway eighteen, that it can take, a twenty minute drive can take an hour and a half. And so I was looking for the best way to get to North Bend and Google Maps will tell you how long it takes on transit. On a Saturday in July, it would have taken ten and a half hours to get from Covington to North Bend on Metro. And I made that statement and asked, well, when can we expect better times from Covington, Maple Valley, Kent, Eunom Claw, Black Diamond to the east side and they said they would reach out to me offline, I have not received any reach out yet, but I did invite Metro to come and give a briefing to us, so, because I know the last time they came out, we had some great questions for them. And I think it's only fair that they come out here and we ask the questions that our community is asking because ten and a half hours to get to North Bend, forty-five minutes to get to Kent, six hours to get to Seattle on any trip is not viable for our residents, and so I'm hopeful that we can get them to come out here and we can start pushing for more routes from Covington, Maple Valley and Black Diamond, so that the residents of southeast King County can have other options. I am looking forward to Saturday, as Jennifer said, I'm not looking forward to the cuts, although she saw the math I was doing earlier, she, she might disagree with me when I say that, but I, I don't want to have to cut anything, but I know we're gonna have to find five hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars to cut and that will not be fun. So I'm hopeful that we can find some very good solutions that are beneficial for, for us and not harmful. Street cleanup, I had fun walk, doing my route with Debbie and Beth, we had some good times, we we were, we found, the things we found, we were able to like, hey, this is not I don't think either, the three of us, our bags were not completely full, which was great, we, we were very happy to see that. And I am hopeful for next year that it's, when we have a combination of the three of us, that it's only one and a half bags instead of maybe two full bags, so. Just keep getting the word out to keep Covington clean.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you to everybody who participated in the Make a Difference Day. Council members, staffs and all of our residents. Even those that didn't show up, because like you said, there was less to be picked up, so that means everybody's trying to do their part. Except whoever's doing the fireball that filled up half a bag again this time, so.
As it puts those sutter wine bottles.
I think it's now the official drink of Covington.
Bakers Market was outstanding, I was I spoke to every single vendor and thanked them and they were all very positive about the new location, the setup, and they were just very excited, so. I let Dana know that with the chamber and I'm, I'm just looking forward to the next one. Ribbon cuttings, Ethan and Dawn mentioned their ribbon cuttings on Monday. The Chamber will be having a ribbon cutting Happy Lemon as a new owner and they're going to do a re-grand opening sometime in November, and once we get the date, we'll let everybody know so they can show up if they'd like. And I don't no, nobody was on council at that time. But we had a young lady that was very involved in our commission. She went to Kentwood High School and she just received her second WNBA championship, Courtney Vander Sloot, from Covington, Kentwood. I, it's just amazing, and when she was on our commission, I remember Margaret saying to her that she's going to go far and here she has, so that was, that was nice to read that, hear about that over the weekend. I don't have any other comments. Look forward to seeing everybody on Saturday. Brings us to our second public comment period, speakers will state their name, organization and whether they are a Covington resident. Comments are directed to city council, not the audience or staff, comments are to be related to city business. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to four minutes per speaker. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to address council this evening? Is there anybody online wishing to address council, please raise your hand. Seeing nobody approach the podium or raise their hand, there not being an executive session, this meeting is adjourned at eight forty-two.